Can I get a roll call, Madam Clerk?
Yes, Mayor. Councilmember Sylvia?
Present.
Councilmember Williams?
Present.
Councilmember Balls?
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Bench?
Present.
Councilmember Garcia?
Present.
Councilmember Flores?
Present.
Councilmember Copeland?
Present.
Mayor Moore?
Present.
Eight members present, one vacancy, zero absent.
Okay, I'd like to tell you that the purpose of this meeting is Committee of the Whole to conduct interview of a qualified applicant for the City Council vacancy. Applications were randomly drawn for the order of interviews. Each applicant will be given fifteen minutes for their interview and at that time we will monit-- it will be monitored by the City Clerk. A list of questions is placed at the podium. The first applicant will interview and we have to ask the applicant to honor the privacy and fairness of the process by waiting in the adjoining room until called by City staff. Councilors asked to honor the procedures as well as not use cell phones, texts, or emails. Do I need to read that? Okay. Following your interview, applicants are welcome to remain in the council chamber and attend the remaining part of the Committee of the Whole session. So let me just do it real smart. The six applicants are in 207. A staff member will go get them. We will ask them the eight questions. We grade them. They get fifteen minutes. That's it. There's no asking for extension. Fifteen minutes. And then from there, we go to the next one. Once they interview, they can stay in the room. Yes.
I guess you might-- I kind of forgot when you say grade them.
Yeah.
Is there a grading part of--
Yeah, it is.
You know--
It's only in your notes.
It's your notes. I'm sorry. It's the same thing. Okay. So you got the sheets. And yeah, because at the end of the day, we're gonna end up happy to vote for somebody. So these sheets are gonna help us. Because once they go from in front of us, unless you got a bionic memory, I'm not gonna remember what everybody--
So there's not actually a grading system in point? It's just me putting my notes?
It's you put your notes.
That's what I wanted to know when you say-- okay.
Make up your own grading system. I have a question.
Yes.
So we're gonna ask these questions, one question at a time?
Yeah.
Okay? Now, what if it take-- we get down to fifteen minutes, we just down to question four, and we don't get to other questions? What-- how we gonna do that?
That's why you want to ask your question only. Let them answer it. How long they take to answer it, that's up to them.
Yeah.
Because they know they got fifteen minutes.
If fifteen minutes is done, it doesn't matter what question you're on.
Okay. So you remind them that you only got fifteen minutes--
They've been told.
To answer all the questions.
They've been told, and they told eight questions. Yes.
Yes. Did you have a question, Ms. Copeland?
Nope, I'm counting how many minutes we're asking.
I have one for the attorney.
Michael, we're not gonna go back and forth, so--
I have mine for a different question. Thank you. For number seven, why did you not run for City Council during the general election? Was that also pertaining to a previous election?
I don't have that question.
I don't understand your question. Was that pertaining to a previous election?
Correct. That's what you stated, that my question was revised.
No, I indicated that your question was revised because it was inappropriate, specifically named other members of council, and was divisive.
I could take the names out, though.
Taking the names out doesn't make it less divisive.
The number seven is also not divisive?
I don't believe it is. It's a common question that's asked by citizens and members of council every single time that a vacancy occurs. If you have further questions about it, it was posed by Councilmember Balls.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Yes.
Are we allowed to make comments during this time? Okay.
No.
Last question.
Huh?
Just ask questions.
Mayor, I think we need to proceed with the interview process.
All right.
There was no public input signed up for the Committee of the Whole, so let's move on to the interviews.
So our first candidate is Anita Dorsey.
Jan, did we do roll call?
Yes.
Yes. It just took us-- thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm moving at the end. I'm like, okay. Good evening.
Good evening.
Do I read the rules, or is--
No.
Okay.
You have a list of questions at the podium. In case you can't hear it, don't take those with you. And we start with Councilwoman Bench. Mayor Pro Tem Bench, sorry.
Thank you. Describe how you would handle a situation in which the council voted five to four to approve a contestable issue, and you are on the dissenting side.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Bench, for that question. We won't always agree on issues. That's just life. There will be certain things that we encounter that we would not always agree on. But that doesn't mean that if I disagree with a situation that I'm still not able to carry out what was approved and do the job that needs to be done for the city. There have been many times where I have encountered situations on jobs where I did not agree with a decision that was made that directly affected my job duties and what I needed to do, but I was still able to work with the team, work with a group of individuals that I was with, and get the job done. So being on the dissenting side does not stop the work that needs to be done.
Councilwoman Sylvia?
Good afternoon. Besides being a resident, what ties you to the city?
My family ties me to the city. This is the place that was the opportunity and the starting ground for my family. My father, my grandfather migrated from the South. So he was part of the great migration from the South to the North. This is the place they gave him the opportunity to do better for his family. This is the place they gave my mother the opportunity to have a great job and to start a career. This is the place where I was born, raised, graduated high school. This is the place they gave me opportunity to attend Michigan State University. This is the place that has given my son opportunity to do things that he loves to do. So the sense of belonging, the sense of community, this is what ties me to the city of Saginaw.
Thank you.
I'm sorry. Councilwoman Garcia?
Good afternoon. What are your goals to accomplish in the two years as a council member?
My goals to accomplish in the two years as a council member would be to have more civic engagement with the community of Saginaw. I believe sometimes there is a disconnect between issues that the community feels important and certain things that the council is working on. And sometimes we have misinformation and we have miscommunication that goes on between council and the community. So I would really like to be a go-between advocate and see more communication between council and community, to see more civic engagement. I know ARPA funds have ushered in a new era of community engagement in the city of Saginaw, and I would like to see that continue over the next two years.
Thank you.
Councilman Flores?
Thank you, Mayor. Do you agree with the City Charter process language that council elects the mayor and the mayor pro tem?
That is a very good question, Councilwoman Flores. Thank you. Um, I do not agree with the City Charter that has the council elect the mayor and the mayor pro tem. I do like the fact that we get to elect our City Council representatives. We get to elect the people that we believe will represent our interests the best. And in doing that, I also believe that we should be able to elect a mayor whom we feel represents our interest as opposed to having a City Council select someone whom they feel is the best fit. I believe that the mayor position should be an elected position.
Thank you.
Mr. Williams?
What do you know or believe the role is of a City Council person?
I believe the role of a City Council person is to represent the interests of the city and also to be accountable to the residents who have selected that person, elected that person to that position. City Council is to represent the needs of the community, the city of Saginaw as a whole, not just the community that we live in, but the entire city. City Council is also to be accountable to the city that has elected these officials to stand by the votes that they do, to stand by the decisions that are made, to have some transparency between City Council and the city.
Councilman Copeland?
When making decisions, how do you determine what is in the best interest of the city?
I believe it is important to engage with the city, to have discussions, to utilize grassroots organizations that we have here in the city. We won't be able to have a handle on every single interest that a person has in this city, but there are people in our communities, there are organizations in our communities that may have a better handle and a better feel for what's going on in a certain community. And I believe it's important that as City Council members that we utilize and partner with the people in our communities to figure out and to determine the proper course of action and the proper decisions for residents in that particular area in the city.
Councilman Balls?
Why did you not run for City Council during the general election?
Well, when the filing deadline came in July, I was battling back and forth with whether or not I wanted to run for a City Council. And as that deadline in July approached, there were certain things going on in my life personally that I felt at that time I would not have the time commitment to give to the position of being a City Council member. And I did not want to take on that commitment and that responsibility without being able to be devoted to it and have the time for it. But since that time, things have changed, and now I am in a better position to serve this city and work for the city.
Okay, and the final question. What experience or background would help you be a better council member?
My background has always come from a grassroots organization background. I grew up in a household where my grandfather was a man of the people. My grandfather was the type of person that when it was time to vote, he would go get the church van, and he would drive around in communities to make sure that people had a right to vote. So that's the type of background that I come from. I come from a background of being a people person, engaging with people. I come from a background of loving to work with young people. I was a member and a participant at the Boys and Girls Club when I was younger. The Boys and Girls Club provided me with my first job. Being in workforce development, not just here in Saginaw, but within the Grand Rapids Urban League and Grand Rapids, Michigan, I've always had a love for young people and training and development and making sure that people have the tools to be the best person that they could be. And I believe that background of being a team player, being innovative, being creative, having a balanced view of issues, and being devoted to what you believe in, I believe that qualifies me for this position.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
You can either remain in here, you can always have a seat in one of the reserved chairs, or you can leave, okay? We just don't want the neighbors to get the questions, that's all. Make sure you leave the questionnaire at the podium for us, please.
Yes, Mayor.
So you can have a seat in one of the six chairs. Come on down. Madam Clerk?
Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Next candidate is Fenobia Dallas.
Good evening.
Good evening.
One moment. Okay.
Good evening.
Good evening. Our first question is Mayor Pro Tem Bench.
Okay. Describe how you would handle a situation in which the council voted five to four to approve a contestable issue, and you were on the dissenting side.
Well, there are a lot of situations that are not necessarily contentious, but people may not have all the information at that time. And what I would do is ask to maybe meet again to discuss further the situation that's going on. Perhaps the people who are involved in the situation may not have had the time to talk with each other. And so taking some time away from a vote to actually sit down at a different table in a different situation, to actually understand everyone's point of view, and then come back and vote on that, is what I would like to happen at that situation.
Councilwoman Sylvia?
Thank you. Besides being a resident, what ties you to the city?
Well, what ties me to the city is my sense of place. I've lived in a number of different locales, from going to college in Tennessee. I was originally born in Ohio, went to college in Tennessee, joined the Navy, traveled around a little bit. One of the things I've learned from my parents is that no matter where you live, you create your own community. And what ties me to the city is, in sort of a way, my job, working at Saginaw Valley State University. But I've learned that the job is not the only thing that makes who you are in terms of being a part of a community. So for me, I've always looked for things to do, for things to contribute to, organizations to belong to. And I'm not gonna say my roots run deep, but they run wide and broad. I have done grant writing workshops in the community. I belong to a number of organizations, Sigma Emerald Sorority, Women of Colors. I've worked with Saginaw African Community Festival. My thing is, whatever I can do to help, I will. That's why I became a member of the Planning Commission, Board of Review, volunteered for the ARPA Advisory Committee. My talents and skills can be used for the benefit of whatever community I'm in, and that, for me, resides right now in Saginaw, Michigan.
Councilwoman Garcia?
What are your goals to accomplish in the two years as a council member?
Well, my goals are hopefully aligned with what the City Council is looking to do, move a city forward that has been, I think, looking at a downside in terms of not just population, but expectations. Many of the things that are-- that had happened in the city were based upon a population of over 150,000 people. We're now down to about 48,000 people, and so we have to retool ourselves. We have to look at how we want to include or increase our population. And that means not just residents, but that's also bringing in other businesses, bringing in schools, bringing in, I think, a lot of different entities to make sure that we grow the right way. I think we have a great opportunity to look at repurposing, reinvigorating, and addressing the challenges that we face as a city of this size.
Next, we have Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you agree with the City Charter process language that the council uses to elect the mayor and the mayor pro tem?
I've been a part of a number of cities, and every city does things differently. How we do it in Saginaw is, I think, a way that works for the city, but there could be some discussions about changing that. But I think right now it works for the city in terms of, rather than having the residents elect a mayor specifically, I think as we elect representatives around the city to represent us, it's those folks who sit on the council who have a better sense of who that person should be to lead the council. I'm thinking back to some of the things that went on in Flint in terms of their elections. And I'm not sure if that's a good thing or a bad thing. Sometimes that's a little bit more divisive in terms of a mayor who was separate from the council versus the council coming together and voting on a person to be a mayor.
Thank you.
Councilman Williams?
What do you know or believe the role is of a City Council person?
A City Council person, especially in Saginaw, is someone who is representative of the entire city, not the specific community or neighborhood they belong or they live in. And that's crucial for us to understand. There are many issues that are going on in different parts of the city, and so it's important to understand all of those issues that may impact one specific neighborhood but maybe not another. If you are looking at only representing a specific part of the city, that actually is more of a divisive issue for the council, because then you're kind of voting for your needs and your people versus everyone in the community. So I think it's important as a City Council member that City Council members are knowledgeable about all issues as much as possible that are going on in the community and make decisions that benefit the community as a whole.
Councilman Copeland?
When making decisions, how do you determine what is in the best interest of the city?
Well, as a member of the Planning Commission, I think that's the strategic plan that the City Council has decided to follow, the master plan. It's a forward-looking document to assure that we can solve our issues by looking at them, understanding them, and asking our community to support us in moving those issues forward for solution. For example, we have a number of goals and objectives to meet. Do they meet the needs of everyone? Probably not. But the master plan is the document to start with. It's a strategic plan that hopefully the city will say, hey, this is something that's good for us, and it works, or maybe this didn't work out the way we wanted it to, and so let's go back and revisit that. So I think that's the overall point, is to have a plan or a goal in mind, and let the City Council drive the city staff, bring along the city residents, the neighborhood associations, bring along businesses to join in on that plan that the City Council has set up.
Councilman Ballas?
Why did you not run for the City Council during the general election?
I didn't run because I was pretty much very involved in a number of different other Choosing to run for City Council is a great opportunity, but you have to prepare for it. And one of the things I've learned is that as I pick up things to do in the community, I have to drop something off, because otherwise you'll become overwhelmed with trying to do too much with too little time. So I didn't run, but I was very much aware of what was going on in the city, and I continue to be aware of what's going on in the city.
Last question. What experience or background would help you be a council person?
I think my time that I've spent on the Planning Commission here in the city of Saginaw for three years. I spent 12 years on the Planning Commission in Carlton Township. I'm very versed in what's going on in terms of the state of Michigan, in terms of the issues, economic issues, residential issues. Taking those lessons and applying them to the city or using them in the city would benefit the community. But additionally, I've lived in larger cities. I've lived in Nashville, Tennessee. I've lived in Chattanooga, Tennessee. I've lived in Monterey, California. I've lived in Orlando, Florida. What I've learned is that there are bits and pieces of different things that happen in those communities that can be applied in a useful way in the city here. And being a part of that decision to help people see other opportunities and other ways of addressing some of our challenges is what I'd like to be able to do.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You could either go out, or you could stay in.
Our next applicant is Michael Hernandez.
Didn't nobody want to sit up front?
Hello?
Hello. Your first question is asked by Mayor Pro Tem Bench.
Good evening. Describe how you would handle a situation in which the council voted five to four to approve a contestable issue, and you were on the dissenting side.
Can you please repeat that question?
Sure. I think they should be on a form in front of you, too.
Excellent.
But I can read it again.
Thank you.
Describe how you would handle a situation in which the council voted five to four to approve a contestable issue, and you were on the dissenting side.
Well, I would face counsel and, you know, go over the situation, go over the issue, give my side of the story so that everybody can get an understanding of how I feel about the situation, and go from there. I mean, you know, it's basically a negotiation in some sense, because I don't want to get a full understanding of the issue first, you know, and then I would proceed with, you know, putting my input before anything was implemented.
Thank you.
Okay. The next question is Councilwoman Sylvia?
Good afternoon. Besides being a resident, what ties you to the city?
Well, I've been a resident for many years, but my father and my mother are from Mexico. My father moved here when the auto industry was basically booming, and he moved here, and my mom, and they had no family here. So I got a lot of ties here. I mean, I basically don't have any family, because it was just my mom and my dad. My dad passed away seven years ago, but my mother is still here, and she currently still lives on Fifth Avenue, which I still live on Fifth Avenue. So I've had a lot of ties to the city. I went to school in the city. I went to St. Mary's Cathedral here, attended Uval Catholic Central, went to Delta College. So I've been in this city all my life, and I've been part of many, you know, organizations, festivals, a lot of things. I've seen this city grow. I've seen this city, you know, see its hard times, you know, growing up on the east side, so, you know, through the 80s and 90s. So I've seen a lot of great change in the last several years. So, you know, I got a lot of ties here in the city of Saginaw. I don't plan on leaving, so.
Councilwoman Garcia?
What are your goals to accomplish in the two years as a council member?
Well, I'd like to accomplish, you know, more things, bring more things to Saginaw, more businesses. You know, downtown is looking great, you know? You know, I've seen the Bancroft. The Bancroft is nice, but there's nothing downstairs in the Bancroft. I'd like to see something come there. I'd like to see, you know, businesses, investors, you know, look at Saginaw with a different perspective and say, hey, you know what? Saginaw can grow, you know? You know, now with the Jolt Event Center, and we got all these festivals, all these things going on in Saginaw. I mean, I would like to accomplish, you know, more businesses coming downtown. Downtown is looking very nice, you know? You're downtown, you look around, and you say, wow. I can remember what downtown used to look like, you know, growing up in Saginaw. So from what it was then and what it is now, I'd like to see more of that come to Saginaw.
Next, we have Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon. Do you agree with the City Charter process language that council uses to elect the mayor and the mayor pro tem?
I do. I do agree. I think it's a-- I mean, I think it's-- to me, it's been that way ever since I've understood it, so, I mean, I'd have to look at it more in depth, but yes, I do agree with it.
Thank you.
Next, we have Councilman Copeland.
Oh, William.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilman Williams. I'm looking dead at it and still said it wrong. I'm sorry.
What do you know or believe the role is of a City Council person?
Well, a council is a multiple body having legislatures and administrative powers such as passing ordinance and appropriating funds. Therefore, the council is responsible for policy decision-making. This is not always easy or pleasant, but it is necessary. As much as possible, council should make decisions with as much help from citizens, the manager, and the staff they can secure. As a member of council, I will work as a team with other council members and-- council members and city officials to help implement these policies, propose, and secure the best policies for our local residents and local businesses so that we can all grow together. In my opinion, the role of a city council member is to listen, communicate, and implement the best judgment on behalf of those who live, work, and play in the city of Saginaw.
Next, we have Councilman Copeland.
When making decisions, how do you determine what is in the best interest of the city?
By reaching out to city residents. By reaching out to city residents, because they are the ones who we are working for. We are the ones that, if I have to go door-to-door and get an understanding of what they need and what they want, then that's something we need to write down and maybe look at, and maybe one day come together and implement something like that that can, you know, make, you know, living here in the city of Saginaw pleasant for them, you know. There's a lot of people out there that have, you know, they got a lot of issues with where they live, or maybe their neighbor, or the way the police are handling issues, you know. We get all this information, we soak it all in, we go out to these residents, and we get an understanding of what they want and what they need, because I think, I believe that's what we're here to do.
Councilman Ballas.
Why did you not run for city council during the general election?
That's a good question. I'm actually very new to politics, although I've studied politics, and I, you know, I look at elections, and I basically see how they're ran and how they run. And, believe me, I didn't want to run, but I don't know if I got cold feet or whatever it was, but when this vacancy came to be, I was like, okay, now it's time to put my name in the hat and give it a shot. But, I mean, to be honest, I think I was just more intimidated. But I told myself, you know, you've been a resident here at the city of Saginaw all your life, so maybe it's time for you to sit at that bench and help these council members come up with some good decisions and, you know, some good ideas for the city of Saginaw.
And your final question. What experience or background could help you be a council member?
Well, I believe, you know, living in the city my whole life, knowing, you know, the tough times that Saginaw has faced, the good times they have faced, and, you know, and, you know, just being here in the city of Saginaw and just living here, I think I have a good input on, you know, what good can come out of Saginaw. I mean, like I said, I've seen so many, I've seen so many issues, I've seen so many good things about Saginaw, and I think there's a lot more to come, good, in the city of Saginaw. So that's why I'm here today, and I really appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Next, we have Bill Astash.
Good evening.
Good evening. You've got your ground rules. The questions are in front of you, and so the first person to ask the first question is council, I'm sorry, Mayor Pro Tem Bench.
Good evening. Please describe how you would handle a situation in which the council voted five to four to approve a contestable issue, and you were on the dissenting side.
Well, I've been on boards and commissions and other things before, and when there's a vote, that's what it is, and you were, you had your voice. And if you're on the dissenting side, just take that very professionally, and you make sure that you keep your friendship with your colleagues and the people that you're working with.
Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you. Besides being a resident, what ties you to the city?
I've been a resident for 20 years. I've been extremely involved in the city of Saginaw since moving here right out of the gate when I got to the city. I was here for a couple of years, and I got on the Historic District Commission, and I served there. After that, being here just recently, I've been on planning and zoning, and also I've been on the Zoning Board of Appeals, and I currently serve on the Planning Commission. I've also done a lot of work with our neighborhoods, especially in the Cathedral District where I live. I've did some more, had developed some more relationships in the southwest side of the city, so I've been doing some projects and working with some of the youth and seniors over there with the NAB. And also, I've been involved with the Youth Protection Council, working here in the city at, with the Antilink Center, getting a lot of donations for them, and that was all my application. Other ways that I connect myself to the city, I just make sure that I'm present, I'm out and about, supporting however I can, and volunteering.
Councilwoman Garcia.
What are your goals to accomplish in the two years as a council member?
What I want to do for the city of Saginaw is try to grow our population, which is going to be really, really, really important. We've talked about it a lot. We need to get our population back up over 50,000 so that we can start, make sure that we are qualifying for our block grant monies through the CBDG, and also want to try to work on some of the programs that are brought into the city and some of the things that are available for... Can you still hear me? Yeah, for housing, they cut out for a little bit there, for housing. So especially working with our certified local government program, try to work with the manager, and then also working with some developers, because that'll help. So really, what we need to do is we need to build out our downtown, because once our downtown starts to flourish again, you know, it's not that it needs to flourish, it's already starting. But once a city is developed, then that's when your surrounding neighborhoods will also start to benefit, because my goal would be to make sure that Saginaw is a city where people are going to want to come and live and raise their families, and just something that's attractive, that's going to make people want to come to here.
Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you agree with the city charter process language that council uses to elect the mayor and the mayor pro tem?
Do I agree with it? I do, and I think the citizens of Saginaw do as well, because nobody has ever stepped forth to try to change the charter. That would be a petition that would be driven, and I've never seen that in my 20 years here. So I think it's a good process. We are a city manager government setup system, and I support that.
Thank you.
Councilman Williams.
What do you know or believe the role is of a city council person?
The city council person is seated and elected into a chair to oversee the manager, who also oversees city and the staff. As a council member, you are a voice for the residents, and so it's really important to be present and accessible. In the past, I believe that I have been that, and people have also told me that, even on the boards and commissions that I'm available. So that if I get a phone call, I do call people back. And if Audrey Beatty, if you're watching right now, I saw the call come in, and I will call you tomorrow. So it's very important that you're there and you're accessible for the public, but also make sure that you show up and you support people. I've been to book signings and everything, and it's been a really good experience to have that opportunity to engage, to interact with the residents. Another thing that I feel is important, too, is, and I'm still going to be going to, are the neighborhood association meetings, and also it was a lot of, it was a good experience to be there at the front porch, roll calls with the police department, because then you also get a different perspective from the residents that live here, kind of what they're thinking, and then also maybe how you might be able to help them out.
Next, we have Councilman Copeland.
When making decisions, how do you determine what is in the best interest of the city?
When you are going to make a decision, no matter if the decision is an easy decision or it's maybe it's a difficult decision, one of the things that I've always done, and I feel is really important to do, is do the homework and talk to the residents. Make sure that if it's an ordinance change, that you're reading that ordinance, make sure if you've got questions from the attorney, you get with your city attorney, because there might also be some other state statutes or things that go along with it. So to answer your question, the most important thing is, is you really need to do your homework, understand the situation that you're voting on, and make sure that you're also listening to your residents in the city as well.
Councilman Ballas.
Why did you, well, I hate to ask you this question, sir.
Ask it, ask it.
Why did you not run for city council during the general election?
I'm sorry, but I did run for city council in the general election, and I think it was a great experience. I knocked a lot of doors in the city, somewhere around 1,000 to 1,200 doors. I had some great conversations with folks here, kind of really got an idea for some of their concerns, but also was able to kind of be a cheerleader for the city as well, because it's not always doom and gloom from the other side of the table. And so that was a really good thing to just talk to people there. And so I didn't do too bad. There was a few precincts that I didn't make it to, and next time I'll have to concentrate on that and give myself some more time to make sure that I reach out to those neighborhoods as well. But I did have about 4,055 votes, so it's not too bad out of 13,000.
What experience or background could help you be a council member?
What experience or background could help me? Well, I work in the field of finance, so when it comes to the budget, I'm pretty familiar with that, even though I would always rely on the city staff to make sure that we, they do prepare the budget for us, but you should also have a general understanding of what's in there. Preparing myself to be a good council member, again, would be to just really participate in the city, make sure that I'm still working with my neighborhoods and my organizations, finding out what their needs are, and then coming back to the table and seeing if I can't work with my colleagues, and maybe we try and figure some things out. And again, it's really just being present, you know, being there for the residents, and make sure that you do respond when they call you. Because I know that was very frustrating for me before I was ever serving. Sometimes you just don't get a phone call back, and you just need a casual conversation. And it's, I think it's good for a council member, too, that when you're here, a lot of times they just don't know how to find the answers. Whether you're working with youth or you're working with a senior, at least you can get them to the department or where you need to get them so that they can get some help. And I believe that was very evident during ARPA when we were trying to get help for our residents and assistance, whether it was an ARPA program that we were working on. We had, you were able to get people into, in resources, whether it was 2-on-1 or something, just anywhere they could do that. So it's important for you to do that for your residents. You work for the people you serve.
Okay, we thank you so much, sir.
Thank you.
You can either go back into the room next door, or you can remain in council chambers.
Next, we have Drew Persley.
Hey, how are y'all?
Fine. Tonight, we'll begin questioning with Mayor Pro Tem Bench.
Yes, good evening. Please describe how you would handle a situation in which the council voted five to four to approve a contestable issue, and you were on the dissenting side.
Honestly, that's a case by case. It really depends what the issue was and where my personal belief would be. I would, it would have to be just something that, I mean, if I disagree with it, I'm going to disagree with it.
Councilman...
One minute. Remind him that the questions are on the table, on the thing you're talking about.
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry. Thank you. Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you. Besides being a resident, what ties you to the city?
So we just moved here five months ago from Atlanta, Georgia. We absolutely love Saginaw. My wife and I have been coming to Michigan for years now for vacation. You can actually afford a home here and not be drowning in debt. This is a great city to have children, have two boys. It's just, it's a night and day different than Atlanta, Georgia, and you can actually thrive and live here.
Councilwoman Garcia.
What are your goals to accomplish in the two years as a council member?
I would like to better the community any way and every way I can. I would like to continue to, I know that Saginaw's trending up, and I would like to just do anything and everything I can to help it, to continue. I'm in the streets every day here. I'm a realtor, and I meet with people every day, so I know needs, I know wants, desires, and I feel like I could honestly help.
Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you agree with the city charter process language that council uses to elect the mayor and the mayor pro tem?
I believe so. I'd have to do a little bit more research. I mean, I'll be honest, I'm a realtor. I've been in insurance, so this is definitely a new position, but it's something I can learn and adapt, and adapt and work hard at it.
Thank you.
Councilman Williams.
What do you know or believe the role is of a city council person?
To help the community grow, to figure out the needs for the community, and to figure out the solutions for the problems.
Council Copeland.
When making decisions, how do you determine what is in the best interest of the city?
You got to weigh out the pros and cons. You got to figure out, again, what's the true needs, what's the true beliefs and the heart and the desire of the city, and kind of grow from there.
Councilman Ballas.
Why did you not run for city council during the general election?
I've only lived here five months, so I didn't have enough time to get here and set up by then.
What experience or background would help you be a council member?
So I own three businesses in three different states. I've also been general manager of a restoration company. I've worked the last 12 natural disasters that have affected the United States. I know firsthand how to rebuild a community, how to help the needs, the wants, the desires, you know, it's there.
Okay, we thank you, sir.
It's nice to meet y'all. Thank you.
Thank you.
You could either go in, I mean, you could go out if you like, or you can have a seat. Y'all notice, nobody took them chairs in the front.
Do we wait until he comes back?
We've got a little bit of time. Do you want to wait for Councilmember Flores to return, Mayor?
Yeah, we'll give him a couple of seconds.
This is Dejeanay Tyler.
We're sorry, Ms. Tyler.
Yeah, you assume she's last on the list.
Your questions on the podium where you are, the questions are on the podium that we'll be asking you.
Okay.
Okay. I'm trying to give my fellow councilperson just a few more seconds.
Okay, that's fine. Thank you.
I tell you what, we're gonna go, we're gonna, we're gonna go, and then when he comes, he could be the last one. Astash.
He needs to hear the question. He's coming right now.
He's not going to hear any of the answers.
Yeah, he's coming right now.
Do you get like that to do?
No, he is right here.
We're sorry, Ms. Tyler. You may continue. Your first question is being asked by Mayor Pro Tem Bench.
Good evening. Please describe how you would handle a situation in which the council voted five to four to approve a contestable issue, and you were on the dissenting side.
Thank you. I think that's a great question. So first, I would, you know, take into consideration what everyone is saying, what all council members are saying, and their opinions. And then I would sit back and try to figure out, I would try to figure out exactly how we can, exactly how it will impact the people in our community, and I would try to get some of their opinions first. And then I would just sit back from there and really prey on it and make the best decision that I feel like will impact our community.
Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you. Besides being a resident, what ties you to the city?
Well, as you said, the resident is obviously the biggest one. This is my home, and it's also all I know. I can't explain it. When you're from Saginaw, you know, it's just a place where a lot of people don't get it when they're outsiders. They come in and they look at this town, and it's small. But for me, it's really the youth and our passion. And we've been through so many changes throughout the years, and I have seen us get really low, but I have seen us get really high, and it's how we get back up. So that's what I would say. Really ties me to the city.
Councilwoman Garcia.
What are your goals to accomplish in the two years as a council member?
Thank you. So my goals would definitely be...
Thank you. So my goals would definitely be to impact our youth. The biggest thing for me is really making sure that we're, we're connected with the next generations. So I would like to, if we could, potentially work on goals, like getting mental health counselors inside the schools to solely focus on mental health. And I'm even talking for elementary students. Because when you, when you're discussing those problems and you're, and you guys are coming up with a resolution for the problems, I believe that, I believe that it's gonna be able to really bring everything down, such as crime, the suicide rate, all type of things within our community and within our youth. I would also like to try to bring down gun violence. It's really hurting our children and hurting our community. So that would be the biggest two things that I would love to accomplish within the two years.
Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you agree with the city charter process language that the council uses to elect the mayor and the mayor pro tem?
I, I agree. I would say I agree because I believe, I just believe that, you know, everything that's set in place right now, it is, I believe that it's, it's in a good spot, but we can always improve.
Thank you.
Councilman Williams.
What do you know or believe the role is of a city council person?
Well, I would say that I believe the role of a city council person is to come together, just come together with everyone in the community. And we, I want us to, I believe that the role is for us to, get my words together, guys, sorry. So it's for us to come together and make the best decision for our city and for all the residents within our city. And it's for us to really figure out, how can we grow? Yes, we're, we're in a great spot now, but how can we grow? How can we bring the next generations in? So that's what I look at for a role with city council member.
Councilman Copeland.
When making decisions, how do you determine what is in the best interest of the city?
I would say the best, for us to figure out what's the best interest of the city, we have to get feedback from the residents. So we really have to get them more involved, ask them questions, and try to figure out, how, how do you guys feel like we can improve our city? How can we make it a better place? How can we make it a better place for us to raise our children? So that would be the first thing, interacting with our city and trying to figure out how can we grow? And then coming together and coming up with different ideas. Once we come up with those ideas, we can actually start to make a plan and then from there, follow through.
Councilman Balls.
Why did you not run for city council during the general election?
I actually did run. I just was, oh, no, I didn't. Well, I tried to run, actually, but there was, I was six signatures short. And I just tried to run really because I, like I said before, I wanna be able to bring my generation in. I wanna be able to, because I'm twenty-three years old, sorry. I'm twenty-three years old, so I wanna be able to bring my generation in and let them know how we can impact our city, how we can come together and know what's really going gone, so we can really grow.
Last question. What experience or background would help you be a council person?
Well, I would say the background experience that I have that would help me become a city council member would be working with the different organizations that are already helping our city. So with me working with Can Council, the Underground World, things like that, and many other organizations, it allowed me to really look at and know what we need and how we can start to make a plan to change it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to thank all of the applicants. I really do. I'd like to thank you for coming. It's a real tough decision to make ahead of us right now. Just a reminder that the appointment will be considered and will be given during the tonight's single subject meeting at six P.M. I'm gonna adjourn this session, or do I need to make a motion? I'm gonna adjourn this session. Tonight, we're gonna start with prayer and pleas led by Councilman Copeland.
All right, if you'd like to participate, please buy in. Gracious Father, we thank you for this evening. We thank you for this opportunity that we have and the privilege that we have as council to select another colleague. Lord, we ask that you give us grace, wisdom, insight on how to do and what to do even as we go further in our meetings, that you would just give us wisdom, continue grace, that we make the best decision for our city. Lord, we even thank you for this holiday season, oh God. We ask that you touch our residents, that you touch our council, that you touch our staff, that this will be a time of love, peace, and joy for those who are downtrodden, that you would just give them joy and peace in their heart. We thank you for guiding us in all that we do. We thank you for the great prosperity for our great city. For it is a new season, it is a new day. A fresh anointing is coming our way. It's a season of power and prosperity. It's a new season and it's coming to us. And so, Father, we thank you and we give you all glory and praise in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, we'd never, we'd never get a film of him forgetting the name to the words to play.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Sylvia. Present. Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Bench.
Present.
Councilmember Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Flores.
Present.
Councilmember Copeland.
Present.
Mayor Moore.
Present.
Members present, zero absent.
Okay, we're gonna start it over again. Good evening. To everyone. This is a public meeting and the audience is asked to refrain and to remain quiet at all times. No, no interruptions, no booing, no clapping, any obnoxious behavior. Once again, we did it earlier, council persons, silent your phones and your tablets. Audience, it's an ask of you guys as well. The purpose of this single subject meeting tonight is to consider to appointment to city council to fill the vacant seat. Madam Clerk.
Mayor, there's no public input for this meeting, so that takes us to motion miscellaneous business. And your item tonight, as you stated, is nomination to appoint applicant to fill the vacancy.
Are there any nominations? Yes.
I nominate Ms. Dorsey.
Yes.
Councilman Oystash. Former Councilman Oystash.
Are there any more nominations?
Dr. Dallas.
Are there any more nominations? Are there any more nominations? Do you have a motion to close this nominate?
You can close it.
Okay, I'm closing the nominations for consideration for the replacement of the council persons. Okay, now where we at?
You can call for roll call vote.
Okay, let's call the roll call vote. Madam Clerk.
Okay, now remember, you're gonna state the candidate's name that you're voting for. Okay, the nominations are Dorsey, Oystash, and Dallas. Councilmember Sylvia.
Dorsey.
Mayor Pro Tem Bench.
Oystash.
Councilmember Balls.
Oystash.
Councilmember Williams.
Oystash.
Councilmember Copeland.
Dorsey.
Councilmember Garcia.
Oystash.
Councilmember Flores.
Dorsey.
Mayor Moore.
Thank you. Oystash.
So the lowest, least vote getter is, well, no one voted for Dallas. So Oystash wins by one, two, three, four, five, two, three. So Oystash is appointed as your council member.
Mr. Oystash, would you come forward, please, so you can do your oath and sign in here? And you will go back to your, you'll see. Priscilla, come here.
Please repeat after me. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
That I will support.
Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of this state.
And the Constitution of this state.
And that I will faithfully perform.
That I will faithfully perform.
The duties of.
The duties of.
Office of.
Office of.
City council member.
City council member.
In and for the city of Saginaw.
In and for the city of Saginaw.
Calling to the best of my ability.
Calling to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Now, let me say this. We had six candidates who applied and all of them were great. And so, two twenty-four is right around the corner. Let's start making preparations to get on boards and commissions and let's start working towards two twenty-four, y'all.
Hey, where you going? Hey.
Just to come off.
Well, you know. Down to the means, Doc.
So now we're before six thirty. We gonna continue to go or wait till six thirty?
You have to wait till six thirty, but you need to finish this meeting, so we have a motion to adjourn.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So moved.
I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Audience in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. We will be convening again in about twenty minutes, y'all. Good evening. I call this meeting to order. Prayer and pleas was done at our committee in the hall. Madam Clerk, can we get a roll call?
Councilmember Sylvia. Present. Councilmember Williams.
Present.
Councilmember Balls.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Bench.
Present.
Councilmember Garcia.
Present.
Councilmember Oystash.
Present.
Councilmember Flores.
Present.
Councilmember Copeland.
Present.
Mayor Moore.
Present.
We have nine members present, zero absent.
Okay. First of all, good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to this public meeting. We ask that the audience refrain from clapping, booing, any obnoxious behavior, please. Also, another reminder, I need more council people to turn to, put your phones on vibrate, please. Also, your computers or your tablets. Audience, I ask that you silence your equipment as well. Madam Clerk, do we have any announcements?
I do, Mayor. Thank you.
I got one part I didn't do.
Okay, go ahead.
I'm sorry. The rules, and I, we'd like to welcome back our new, our new council member, Bill Oystash. We just welcomed you back. Now, I'm sorry. Can we have any announcements?
You're fine. That was worth it. Announcements, I want to remind everyone that City Hall will be closed Friday, December twenty-third, and Monday, December twenty-sixth for the Christmas holiday, and Friday, December thirtieth, and Monday, January second for the New Year holiday. And soon, you're gonna see yellow trucks and smiling faces in the city of Saginaw as priority waste will begin collecting your residential trash and recycling. And that's gonna start on January second of two thousand twenty-three. For best results, residents should have all your properly prepared materials at the curb no later than seven o'clock A.M. And remember, you have a service day, not a collection time. And routes are run until they're finished. For any service issues, call MMWA at nine eight nine seven eight one nine five 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 within one business day of your service day. And collection of old Christmas lighting is being accepted at the Public Works Building. It's located at fourteen thirty-five South Washington Avenue. And that collection will run through January fifteenth of two thousand twenty-three. And Mayor, that puts us at public input.
We welcome everyone who signed up to address the audience this evening. Please speak slowly and clearly so that we don't miss your point that you want us to consider. You will be called to the podium by the city clerk. The speakers are limited to three minutes, which is time by the clerk. So be sure that you cover your topics so that we can, so the council can actually give serious consideration to the concerns that you bring forth. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first speaker tonight is Ralph Martin.
Good evenings.
Good evenings.
Saganaw City. Met a mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council, manager, staff, city of Saginaw. I am Ralph Martin, twelve fifteen Carroll Street, here in the wonderful city of Saginaw, Michigan. And I am here to represent, as president, the Saginaw African Cultural Festival. Longest-running festival, African cultural festival in this country at this time and running. And basically, what I'm just wanna do is just make sure that you guys are all aware that the Saginaw African Cultural Festival is preparing for our Kwanzaa celebration, which will be at First Ward Community Center at four o'clock on the thirty-first of December. This is a great celebration time where we have culture, food, and teachings of the, of the Kwanzaa principles and the poetry, and just a really good time over at First Ward. And y'all are cordially invited. Also, just want you to know that we are looking so forward to preparing ourselves for the fifty-fifth consecutive festival in August. Just wanna make sure that we are all aware that it's a lot of work getting put into that already. My, my committee members have been working diligently, our volunteers, and some of the city, city of Saginaw citizens that are involved are working very hard to make this one of the best ever Saginaw African Cultural Festival that we've ever had brought forth to Saginaw. Also, I want you to be aware that the Saginaw African Cultural Festival are in the process of initiating a Charles McNair chess program over at Arthur Eddy Academy. That on Thursdays, we actually work with fourth, fifth graders and third graders, teaching them the game of chess. That was something dear to the heart of our, one of our leaders, Charles McNair. And we're trying to continue that. Just trying to give you an idea that the African Cultural Festival, we are not just that three days in August. We're in this community, being like a mobile community throughout the year. And we just really, really hope that you, we understand that there's a lot of changes may have come about from the beginning of the, the ARPA initiative. And just to let you know, we are very open to renegotiating or re-submitting, you know, our ask or whatever it would take to keep us still considered for some of those ARPA funds. We did take a pretty good hit during the COVID year of two thousand twenty. We didn't get as many donations, which is what we are, five oh one C. We get donations from supporters and sponsors. And we took a very, uh, very significant hit. And we just hope that we will be still on your radar when you come time to make your decision for the ARPA funds. Thank you very much. Merry Christmas. Happy Kwanzaa.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Scott Leidl.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Scott Leidl and I'm the executive director with Big Brothers Big Sisters here in Saginaw. First, I just wanna thank you guys for approving so much dollars for youth initiatives here in the city of Saginaw. And I wanna speak today on half of the Big Brothers Big Sisters and hope that we'll be able to use some of those dollars to continue to have the incredible impact that we're having here on the youth. Our mission is to create and support one-to-one mentor. And we really have a vision to make sure that every youth reaches their full potential. In its simplest form, what Big Brothers Big Sisters is, is we're a one-to-one youth mentoring organization. We match youth ages six through eighteen with an adult mentor, a positive role model in their life that can help them as they look toward their future. By spending two to three times a month with their big, a little can change their outlook on life. The shift in outlook can lead to a new trajectory, one that can help them achieve new goals, have more confidence and the ability to struggle forward, basically a growth mindset. Most of the kids we work with are at youth risk, high-risk kids. Our program allows them to see some things that they've never seen before, have guidance, and have them have a direction for their future. Our program, you know, monitors what we do. We measure the impact that we're having in the lives of children. We do that through service. We do that through surveys, and our numbers are great. 91% of our littles have higher scholastic competency and commitment to learning. 85% of our littles demonstrate higher self-esteem, social acceptance, and more connected to family, and 86% of our littles have less risk-taking behaviors than when they started our program. So we know we're making a difference. But just as important as the impacts that we're having is those that we can't measure or what didn't happen in their lives. Research has shown that a dollar invested in prevention, prevention today can save $15 to $18 in future treatment costs from low educational attainment, public assistance, substance abuse treatment, and incarceration. You know, Big Brothers Big Sisters really helps unlock the future for these youth that we're serving. With the help of ARPA dollars, we'd be able to increase the number of kids we're serving here in Saginaw. You know, we're serving about 90 kids a year. We could bring in a new match coordinator and increase that number because we know there's more that need it. We currently have 15 littles on our waitlist, and we know we're only serving a fraction of the kids, at-risk youth here in Saginaw that need and want to mentor. So I appreciate your consideration. I know we have little time, but if you have a question, I think we have a couple seconds. Nope, we're not.
No questions.
No questions.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Teresa Stitt.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Teresa Stitt. I live in the Fairground neighborhood, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Fairground Neighborhood Association. On Monday, October 17th, the president of the Fairground Association sent an email request for a meeting to the mayor and the city manager. There was no response. On November 24th, in a discussion with the mayor, she said that she did not get the email but had not checked for some time. This is understandable considering the email came before the election. On November 25th, I sent a second email forwarded than the first one requesting a second meeting with the mayor and the city manager. There still has been no response, but in fairness to the mayor, she did announce here that the Fairground members wanted to meet with the council, but there has been no response from the council. So we understand that the city does not own the Fairground, but we understand that we have to move forward with some other options. But we should not have to make calls and send letters to Governor Whitman. We should not have to call Congressman Kildee or Molinar or Senator Peters or Depp Stavino to talk about how the federal government is linked to the demise of our neighborhood. We certainly should not have to send photos and drone surveys to Secretary Marsha Fudge at the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development to show how that department she supervised is the largest contributor to the blighted, rotten-infested, and swampy wasteland in one of Saginaw's poorest neighborhoods. On Tuesday, November 29th, the governor, the congressman, and the president was here in our area sharing how much money that had come into our area, into the state of Michigan and into our local area, and how they were fixing things and things were better. They were fixing the infrastructure. They were fixing the damn roads, and we wondered, did anybody talk about the Fairground? The Fairground is our infrastructure, and we are hoping that someone would be able to discuss that issue. $200 million and no one civil enough to have a discussion with us about how we can fix it. That's why we wanted to meet. When we asked for the meeting, we want the Fairground Association, the city, the Housing Commission, and the county to maybe have a discussion of how we could all work together to fix this issue. So thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Juanita Drake.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Juanita Drake. I come before you on behalf of the Fairground Neighborhood Association and the community. In September, when the council withdrew the first phase of association proposal to eliminate the blight of the Saginaw Fairgrounds, we were pleased because it was the start of the development plan in our proposal. Residents of the community and outside of the community would tell us how happy they were that the city was going to clean up the property that had been allowed to become wasteland and a habitat for all sorts of animals for many years. This blight was not created by the residents. The residents were so happy that the blight that children walking to Saginaw High School had to see and wonder if there was something in those bushes that would harm them would be gone. They were happy that the blight that was decreasing their property value would be gone. They were happy that the blight others see when they come into our city from the Bridgeport exit would be gone. The two interviews Mayor Moore had with TV5 saying the land was going to be cleaned up added to the excitement that a cleanup was actually going to happen. At the November meetings, the city manager reported that the housing commission had not committed to the agreement and that another agreement would be sent, given the housing commission 45 days to exempt. When asked if the cleanup could still be done if the agreement is not accepted, the city manager's response was, "The city doesn't own the land." I'm wondering if that response means the city will not put forth more effort to clean up the blight? Last week, manager Morales reported that the housing commission responded to the agreement and that Congressman Kildee was also interested in the agreement. The details of the response was not given. A few years ago, I attended a meeting that Congressman Kildee was at to discuss the Fairground. At that meeting, there wasn't a city official there to say the city was concerned about the fact of the blight. Hopefully, this time, the support is there. The residents in the community want to see the land cleaned up and developed. The cleanup will greatly enhance our community. The resident would know that our community is part of the city plan for improvement. In October, I sent an email to the mayor and city manager requesting a meeting but didn't get a response. I hope you will consider a meeting with us. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Henry Hill.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, mayor, council members. My name is Henry Hill. I'm the founder of Second Chance Youth Organization. I have recently become affiliated with Changing Situations Organization. Founder is here, Clarinet McFadden, and she's probably gonna tell y'all more in a few minutes about the organization. Anyway, her organization is dealing with guys coming out of prison. A lot of guys is coming out of prison. They don't have no education, they don't have no family support, some of them can't read or write, and some of them are constantly going back and forth to prison thinking because they don't get a substantial amount of time. They don't sit down for a while, they don't learn how to be smarter or slicker at what they doing, which in my opinion is a form of insanity. I've been home after 37 years, for five years now, I ain't caught a traffic ticket. So the point they don't make is I don't understand how guys keep going back and forth to prison like it's a revolving door. So with that being said, Changing Situations, I would, once I get my youth program started, I will have some of the brothers, former inmates come in, mentor to the youths or whatnot about what their experience has been. Some of them probably be a great inspiration to the youth, that's troubled youth around Saginaw community. Also, we will have share resume with, have them do resume, job applications, and prepare them with attires for jobs and all that stuff. Thank you for your time and happy holidays.
Thank you. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Clarinet Robie McFadden.
Good evening, city council members, mayor, Protem team. My name is Clarinet Robie McFadden. I'm a long-life resident of Saginaw, and I'm a resident of Bridgeport Township. I'm here to present my nonprofit organization, as Mr. Hill explained to you guys. It's called Changing Situations. It's a nonprofit organization, corporation, which I have an LLC under called Real Living. My organization is asking, due to COVID, that we wasn't able to establish the program, ARPA funds to continue to support the juvenile lifers program and the release of individuals that are coming out under the change of law that Mr. Hill was subject to, also experienced 37 years incarcerated of. His brother will recently be being released after having during 42 years. It was an individual in Lansing, Aaron Rogers, that was interviewed with Kareem Bohm last Sunday on Straight Talk that was released. He also did 42 years under the juvenile lifers law and was released after that re-establishment of that. My organization, Changing Situations Nonprofits, asking for funds to help these individuals be educated, educate youth, going to Saginaw Public Schools, Bridgeport Schools, teaching the youth at an early age, Miranda rights, their rights with the police. Policemen are not all bad. These individuals need to be re-taught that and save their lives, their parents' lives can be saved, to have more of a positive reinforcement relationship with police officers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our final speaker tonight is Taylor Buford. She's not here. Don't see her. Mayor, that takes us to remarks of council.
Counsel, you guys had limited to three minutes as well. We'll begin tonight with Councilman Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. Merry Christmas and happy holidays to everybody. I don't have too much. Thank you for all the speakers that came in front of us today with the Fairgrounds Agreement. We'll definitely make sure that you get some answers or get an answer from the email accordingly. Also, Mr. Hill, always great to see you. Well, I'll follow up with you individually. Congratulations to Councilmember Oystash for being appointed to the council, and I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
There's a lot that had happened this last week. First off, to Julian Morris with Swag Magazine, I had the opportunity to attend his event yesterday, Schoolhouse Rock, which is documentary that him and his brother had put together. It was an amazing look into the type of harm that had been done to the educational system, especially here in Saginaw. There was one gentleman that didn't know that he had transferred schools until his mother told him that day after. And it was kinda comical in the way it was set up, but, you know, there is an extra burden that COVID had put on to us when it comes down to the educational system here. We need to make sure that we're working with the Board of Education to make sure these ARPA dollars are spent accordingly to help individuals. So that was my main takeaway from that, and great job to Julian. He did a great, great job producing that documentary. And then also to the Tamale Cook-Off, I was one of the celebrity judges along with the mayor, so that was fun over at Nuvall. And then congratulations to TNT, who ended up winning not only the celebrity judges award, but also just the all-over award for every.
People's Choice.
People's Choice Award, that was called. They had amazing tamales, as did everybody else. And then Christmas with Angels, it was great. Also, the mayor was there, Councilmember Oystash was there. It was great to see so many folks continuing to invest in the happiness of children throughout this holiday season, especially given the fact that we have a poverty problem. So I had a busy week, but it was, it was amazing to see people active and involved in there. And then I'll finish with this, Mr. Cosby, Adonis Cosby is still missing. If anybody has any information, please call Detective Brandon Jebb, 989-759-1762. It's getting close to Christmas. His mother is still looking for him. I'll continue to give out that information until he's found. So that's all I have. Thanks so much.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Copeland.
Good evening. Thank you to our public speakers that came this evening. Hanukkah Samach and Chag Arim Samach. It is Hanukkah. This is the second night of Hanukkah. Please forgive me if I butchered that. I've been practicing even before our meeting. But happy Hanukkah to our Jewish residents. This is the second night of Hanukkah. Just wanted to acknowledge that this evening. Thank you again to our council speaker, to our public speakers and those who we voted or interviewed for the council position. Congratulations to Councilman Oystash on receiving that position. I do wanna say again, reiterating, last night, the documentary, which I must say is, I thought I was watching a Netflix documentary. It was so good, but it really touched my heart and the needs of our young people in reading. And one of the things I thought about for the holidays is as we're getting ready for gifts and celebrating, because we know Jesus is the reason for the season, my personal beliefs, but make some time to buy a book for Christmas. If you have a young person, buy them a book, and over the holidays, sit down to read with them. The value of just sitting down, reading with your child. Sometimes we may not want to accept it, but seeing that documentary and hearing the actual needs from the students, we are in a state of emergency, and how we can start is at home. It begins at home. So as we celebrate the holiday, if you can, buy one book and make an effort over the holiday season to read it with your child, your grandchild, your nephew or your niece, your big sister big, your little, because our young people need us. Also, I want to say it has been a great opportunity. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas to my colleagues. This has been a fun year for us. We are almost to the end of it, and I'm just really looking forward to another great year of working together with each other, seeing great things coming from our city. Make some time to spend some love, light, and joy. There's a lot of things going on, but it's another chance for us to hug someone, love someone, and I have to say, this past week, my thoughts, if you are having thoughts of suicide, please know that you are not alone. You're not by yourself. Call 211 is a number that you can reach out for, for assistance. It is a, I experienced some things with one of my student this past week that I thought I never would experience, and just it's the reality that people are during this time of year. So we are here, there are people here in the community that cares. You are not by yourself. You are not alone. We do care for you. If you're listening to this message, we care for you here in the city of Saginaw, and if you need assistance, 211 is a phone number that you can call. Have a great holiday, enjoy your family and friends. That's all.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Sylvia.
Thank you so much. Excuse me, thank you. Good evening. I'd like to say I appreciate all of the speakers. Definitely will be taking your information into consideration. Definitely wanna meet with you, Ms. McFadden. Anybody knows that's one of my passion, men released from prison. So I'd also like to acknowledge Mr. Phil Kawada and send my condolences again to him. I'd like to thank our own Draymond Green for the wonderful work that him and his team completed in regards to helping feed members of the city of Saginaw on this past Sunday. Also, I'd like to say that I was at YDC, Youth Development Corporation, this afternoon along with some of my colleagues, that we witnessed the first, the first signing and homeownership. They got their keys today, so what they're doing at YDC is definitely working. I'd like to say congratulations to Mr. Eric Elveston. It was awesome. These young people were so happy. I was so happy, I almost signed a mortgage just then. Just kidding. I'd like to say thank you for all the candidates this evening. You did a marvelous job, but of course, it had to come down to one, and I look forward to hearing from you all again. Some of you, I hear from you quite often anyway, and thank you for that. And happy holidays to everyone, whatever part of the holiday you celebrate. So God bless and have a great rest of the year.
Next, we have Councilman Williams.
Thank you, Mayor. Excuse me. Good evening, everyone. Just like to say thank you to everyone who came out and interviewed for the position for our council seat, and congratulations to Councilman Oystash for being voted back in. I'd also like to thank the public speakers that came out tonight. I would like to say I missed. I would like to say I missed Mr. Elveston's, the deal over at YDC earlier, but I was there before and then thereafter. But I was excited to hear how everything went down with that couple. Amazing, amazing project there. Before that, I was able to go over and visit Guided Grace and see the work that they're doing. And this past week, I talked to the name. We're out there working with our organizations, trying to figure out the best route, what to do. And not just me, it's my colleagues. And we've been working behind the scenes as far as recreation and youth development goes and trying to be as transparent as possible with all of us. So when we come back with the decision, it's going to be a good one. It's going to be a good one for our city. And I'm proud of the work that we all are doing. And I'm really glad to be able to look down this table and see it completed again. It's a good feeling on the inside, especially knowing how much work we have to do. So with that said, that's it, Mayor.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilman Ball.
Thank you very much. I'd like to thank everybody for coming out to the City Council today and all the speakers. I'd like to let you know that your issues will be, the city manager will take those and will give you some answers on those. You know, being involved in the community myself, you know, I witnessed a lot of things. And one of the things that I witnessed is the needs that we need here in the city of Saginaw and the people that get involved in those needs. You know, I'm thinking about the Big Brothers and Sisters Program, how much we need. And everybody coming here talking about, we need more mentors. The gentleman talking about going to prison for some time. More than likely, those guys that go to prison, they left some kids at home. Those kids have to be mentored by somebody, and it's up to our community. You know, when we think about doing work of God, we got to do the work, His work is to get involved in these kids' life to make them better human beings. And we all can do part of that. You know, by me being on the Board of Directors of Wannegaes Credit Union, now we a division of Financial Plus, as the board chairman, I had a latitude or an opportunity to steer a lot of funds to a lot of different people in the community. And I must admit that during that time, I made sure that the Big Brothers and Sisters get money every year, Youth Development Corporation get money every year. I made sure that the Fairgrounds got a grant for, we gave them ten thousand dollars to do the plans that they wanted to do with the Fairgrounds. Swag Magazine, we making sure they get money. We sponsored the ladies fashion show they had, and we got advertising in that magazine. Mr. Martin will tell you that we sponsored, Premier sponsored for the African American Festival Organization. You know, so when you get in positions, you have the opportunity to do some things, but now we're going to be going through some changes. Now we've got to accommodate with a new board. Now we, with a bigger, they have more funds than we have, so they like, they have more board members than we have. So now we got to work that back out again so we can get some money back in this community. But I implore everybody that's in here, to get involved in those organizations, see how you can get money back in our community with these ARPA funds. We need to make sure those funds get to the youth. Everybody talking about the youth, the youth, the youth. We're not going to have no future if we don't straighten these kids out. I mean, it was a fabulous thing that we did, where we gave five million dollars to build a new facility in downtown Saginaw. It's going to be great when it get built up. Mr. Shaheen is doing a great job in the city of Saginaw with development, but we need to develop our kids too, so we don't necessarily have to have those type of centers. We're going to have them anyway, but we're going to have to have some mental health places for everybody. But we can mold and shape our kids at a young age. If we can do that, we won't have to worry about trying to fix broken adults. It's just that plain and simple. So when we start putting these ARPA funds in the community centers, in the neighborhood house, the first world community centers, the gentleman said, when you invest one dollar in a kid, then that's another eighteen dollars that you don't have to worry about investing into them later on for getting them out of trouble. So let's think about that when we take care of business. Thank you.
Next, we have Councilman Ostache.
Thanks, Mayor. I'm probably going to use my whole three minutes tonight. So first of all, I want to thank Bobby DeLeon, the whole group, Levi, everybody. The Christmas with Angels event was fantastic. That was the first time I'd ever attended, and it won't be my last, and looking forward to getting more involved next year. Councilman Copeland, thank you for bringing up the fact of suicide, especially this time of the year with sadness. You and I talked about this last week, and just today in the news, they were featuring just that topic. So thank you for bringing that up. Just know that we are here for you. There's assistance, there's phone numbers. I'm on Facebook. Find my phone number, give us a call. Just please, reach out to somebody if you need help. Yes, it is that time of the season, so I want to thank everybody. Merry Christmas, happy holidays, happy Kwanzaa, happy Hanukkah, and hope everybody has a safe holiday. To our public speakers tonight, thank you for coming out. Your voice is always good to hear, and of course, our city staff will be referring back to things that you talked about. I also want to give thanks to all the applicants that came out tonight. It takes a lot to fill out everything, go through the process and come up here and interview, but just remember that there's so many things that you can still do for your committee, for your community, whether it's a board and commission here at the city that you can apply for, or just neighborhoods, adopting parks like we've done in our neighborhood, just getting out, being president, picking up trash and just saying, you know, you get to know your neighbors. There's just so much you can do to help the city move forward. Congratulations, I think Eric stepped out of the room. We were talking earlier, but Councilman Monique, you brought that up. It's an excellent program that he's put together. And if you're not familiar with Youth Development Corporation, please stop by or just check out their website. Some incredible stuff that he's doing with our youth. So congratulations to that organization. I'm excited about that. I also want to take some time to thank my council members who voted for you tonight for that support. For others, I am still looking forward to working with you. Like you said, we're back up here again. There's a lot of things I was working on during the election cycle through my four years on City Council. I'm sure you're all aware of that with the application that I put forth for this position. I'm going to continue to work on things, and no matter how it went tonight, I wasn't going anywhere. And I made that very clear to the community when I lost my seat back in November. Speaking about that seat, my colleague, Autumn Scherzer. I want to take a little bit of time tonight to pay some tribute to you. You and I became, and I hope you're listening, because you and I became very, very, very good friends when we ran together in 2018. You are like a sister to me, and I just want to thank you for your service to the city of Saginaw. Thank you for everything that we worked on. I know that we'll probably be talking sometime in the future, but again, just thank you for everything that you did to the city. It was an honor to serve with you. That's it. I guess I didn't use up my three minutes.
Thank you. Next, we have Councilwoman Garcia.
Good evening, concerned citizens of the community. Just wanted to say that I am a board member of the Christmas with Angels. It is a fantastic program, a sixth year. I was a little bit bummed. Last Monday after the meeting, I started getting sick and been sick all week, so I'm finally feeling a little bit better. And I just want to thank my colleagues with my bucket down there that gave me time to get better, because we are trying to get this money out, and I have to still do my research since I am new. But with me being ill, I didn't feel like meeting and getting into other people's sick. So we're still working on that. I'm going to be meeting with some of the facility, or the staff here and get to know more about ARPA dollars and what we can do and stuff. And I know I've heard about a lot of the great programs already and the work that you guys are doing. And like I said, I've been in the community, so I'm well aware of a lot of the programs that are out there. And just getting ready to celebrate my first Christmas with my grandson Emiliano and my great nephew Ace, they're both, their first Christmases. So I'm excited to spend time with family and kind of relaxing and just hoping to get back on board. And congratulations to Bill. Now I have, surrounded by guys like always, but I'll keep them in line down here, so I'm not worried about it. I'll make sure we stay on task. Happy holidays to you and all your family and much success for all this board and council here for the upcoming year. We have a lot of decisions to make, but I know we'll do the right thing for the city of council upcoming year. And last but not least, and I know, I'm sure Bob Barker said it best, don't forget to have your pets sprayed or neutered. Thank you. I'm done.
Next, we have Mayor Proton Bitch.
Thank you. Still getting used to going second to last, when I think everybody says everything I want to say before it gets to me, so I can keep it brief. But I do want to start by thanking everybody who came out tonight to apply for the position of council. It's never easy to file and run. Campaigns are daunting and things like that, but it's equally as intimidating often, throwing your hat in the ring for a role just to be appointed even. And it's nice to see that people are interested and care and that we had such wonderful people applying. And on top of that, we were able to return my dear colleague, Councilman Ostache, to the table. And I just want to congratulate him and say how happy I am to have you back. And I would just piggyback off of what he said. It's especially bittersweet, I think, for some of us to have had Autumn, Councilwoman Scherzer step back only to make a place for a new person, that happened to be Councilman Ostache. But she is a fantastic public servant and just a wonderful human being who I was very grateful to get to know and serve with. And I just, I wish her the best, and I know that she's going to continue to do wonderful things out in the community, just like we are. She's not going anywhere, just like Bill's not going anywhere. And we're just very lucky that we have such a dedicated group of people interested in serving this city. And we have a good team at its core, I think, for sure, even if we don't always agree. And I would say to our public speakers, thank you so much for being here tonight. Thank you for bringing your concerns forward. I don't think, I know enough about some of the things that are going on that were brought up to necessarily weigh in without deferring to staff and allowing them to follow up. But what your concerns are valid and heard. I agree with what was said about the Fairgrounds, that it's not fair that we have to deal with our federal government repeatedly and repeatedly when they are so far removed from the blight and the problems that are caused by them continuing to hold on to this property. And unfortunately, we're the ones who, you know, are easiest, easiest to access. And unfortunately, other than being able to clean up where we can, and I know staff has tried their best in the past, but other than, you know, doing that, we're the ones with probably the least amount of concern. But I hope you guys are communicating directly with the Housing Commission if you aren't already. But I look forward to hearing more information on that from the manager or whatever they're able to do to respond. But I just appreciate everybody's interest in being here tonight, and that's all I have, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I'd like to thank, firstly, we wish everybody happy holidays. Okay? It is that time of the year, and if you've got any elderly people in your neighborhood, check on them. And not just the elderly, because there's some young folks that we need to check on that be distant, missing out of action. So just check on them. Fairgrounds, oh, you're great. I do owe you guys an apology. I told the city manager, we got to sit down and meet with you. But one thing I liked that you guys did do, you needed to take it to the next level, because we had done all we could do with that one. And it needed to go where it went. It needed to go to Kildee. It needed to go to Stabenoff. It needed to go so that they can see that you guys were trying and we were working to get something done. Mr. Hill, always good, always good. Ms. McFadden, I need to get some information. You should have had handouts. Okay? Get us some handouts. One of the things that I love about the team right now is that the team is a team. Is a team now. They're beginning, we are all beginning to sort of understand each other. So when we in your space, we back up out your space. If we not in your face, space, we get in your space. But we do that so that the dream can come together. Citizens, if you think 2022 was challenging for us, 2023 is going to be a whole lot more challenging. Just like we say over and over again, there's money in the hopper and we got to be ready to get it. And how do we get ready? We begin to talk. We begin to at least ask one another. Don't shout at me. Ask me. I won't shout at you. One of the things that I really love about Saginaw is this, and I don't care, people tell me that I'm crazy, but Saginaw is a welcoming city for real. It really is. Because you can, I mean, maybe it's me. I can go to any side of town and get respect. And get respect. Those that don't know me, respect me. Them that do know me, respect me crazy, but they respect me. So I'm just saying, one of the things that I'd like us all to make a commitment to ourselves up here this year, we're going to do more better with being community involved. If we get honest, we're not always where we need to be. We're not. We're not. I'm guilty. And Lord knows, I'm everywhere, but I'm guilty. So we all make a commitment to do a little bit more outreach and talking. Thank you. Madam Clerk.
We are now at reports from the manager.
Yes, Mr. Manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So one item I do want to update council on, we do have a presentation, but first, I did contact Consumers Energy, which is the group that we were talking about, potential partner for our furnace program. And I will tell you that staff was already on top of that. They did talk with some members of Yolanda staff, so they have a meeting set up for January third. It's a great opportunity for us, because I think with consumers, they potentially could pay for a new water heater for people if that's something they need, or they could help subsidize the furnace program, so we could do more furnaces. And so we'll learn more about that on that meeting on January third, but they're very excited in the program, so I think that's just another key point that we are pushing the money out, and I think that's a great program that we can use to help people, and now we can work with consumers to leverage that even more. And our presentation this evening, we have Amy Rivette, who is our principal with Yo and Yo, who is our audit manager, and she's going to present the 2022 annual audit.
Well, good evening, and thank you for having me here tonight. Thank you. Tonight, I'm going to go over the audit results from the June 30th, 2022 audit. So first off, I just want to point out really what the city council hires an auditor for. So we're required to give you an opinion on your audited financial statements. And an audit can only be issued by a licensed independent CPA firm. And really, management is the one that's responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of those financial statements in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles, as well as the design and implementation of the internal controls. And then as your auditors, what happens is my team and I come in and we audit that information presented, and then we issue you an opinion on it. And the city was issued an unmodified opinion, which is the highest level of assurance offered. It's a clean opinion with no material modifications that need to be made. I also want to point out that the city did receive an award for their financial reporting excellence from the GFOWA, which is the Governmental Finance Officers Association, for your June 30th, 2021 annual comprehensive financial report. So I just wanted to say congratulations and great job, because that is a huge accomplishment. So now we'll get into some of the numbers, and I have a few graphs up here. I always think it's a little bit easier to see a picture instead of trying to look at some numbers in a financial statement. So I'll just point out a few things. This pie chart is your general fund revenue and includes your transfers in. The total is a little over forty point three million. And the big sections here that you can see that we'll talk about where most of your general fund revenue is coming from is city income taxes, which is about forty percent of the total pie chart. That was an increase over last year of about two million. And then we have property taxes, which is about ten percent of your total general fund revenue. That was up about three percent or a hundred and ten thousand over last year. And then we have intergovernmental revenue, which is revenue you receive from the state of Michigan, your state shared revenue. That was about nine point two million of the total nine point four million or twenty-four percent of your total. The next chart is a pie chart, or excuse me, bar chart, where we've been charting your total revenue, just to kind of give you comparison. We like to do a comparison of prior year to current year. So 2021 to 2022, you can see we did have a decrease in our general fund revenue of about one point six million. And really, that's a combination of three key factors that happened during the year. The first one being, as I just mentioned, we did see an increase in your city income tax of about two point one million. Now, that was offset by a decrease of about one point eight million in the police and fire donations that were received last year. The city received quite a few contributions and donations for the COVID pandemic. And then we also had a decrease this year in the federal grants that the city received from the federal government of about one point eight million. Again, majority of that was related to COVID funding last year that we did not get this Now, the next slide is a pie chart of the expenditures and transfers out, which was a little over thirty-nine million. And the biggest section here you can see is And the biggest section here you can see is the green piece there, which is public safety. So about 61% of the total general fund expenditures is related to public safety. That's broken down to police and fire. Police is about 14.4 million, and then fire is about 9.4 million. It really was comparative to last year of the percentage of the pie that was attributed to the public safety of the same percent. And then general government, which was about 13%. That includes departments such as city council, city manager, employee services, as well as the retiree healthcare. Insurance is included in that of about $2.2 million, which makes up that total 4.8 million. Now, your general fund expenditures, we have the bar chart. Again, we did the same thing where we're just charting them and really looking at the comparison from last year to this year. And the expenditures did increase about 3.4 million over last year. Two key areas here to mention is one, and these were all budgeted for and approved by council. We did have an increase in our transfers out to other city non-major governmental funds this year, which was increased over last year of about $1 million, as well as an increase in some public safety expenditures, where we were spending those prior grant dollars that we received related mainly for the COVID pandemic. So those are going back into the public safety expenditures. Now, my next two slides that I have up are going to be related to your sewer fund and your water fund. So those funds are different than the general fund that we just talked about. So the sewer and water fund are more like a business-type fund, or what we call an enterprise fund, where a fee is charged for services, and then we have the external uses for operating expenses. So the blue piece there is the user charges. So that's what we are collecting from residents for the services for sewer and water. So if we look at that, you can see that both the blue and the red are just about even. So that's telling us that our cash inflows and our cash outflows for the sewer fund were just about breaking even. So we're spending what we're taking in and about breaking even about 127,000 to the positive that we saw in the sewer fund. We have a similar chart, too, for water. I did go back and look at 2021. If you remember, there was a water revenue refunding bond last year in 2021, so that's why you see the cash inflows significantly higher compared to the other years. So if we focus, though, on 2022, we have the similar situation where the charge for our services that we have are turned around and being spent, you know, on those operating expenses, too. So again, we're breaking even. And just keep in mind that if we're trying to build up any of the equity that we have there, if there's going to be any future projects, our updates to the system, we need to make sure we have some of those reserves set aside. And my last slide that I have really regarding the numbers before we get into the single audit, some internal control items, is related to the retirement and retiree healthcare contributions. So on the bottom, we do have what the contributions into the plan were. From the retiree healthcare, the contributions into the plan were 9.3 million. And for pension, the contributions into the plan was 21.6 million. And when we look at that, we have to then consider, what are the benefits that are being paid out of the plan, you know, for pension and retirees? So for OPEB, the retiree healthcare, the amount of benefit payments going out is 8.6 million. And then for pension, the payments going out was 30.1 million. So we're paying out more for pension than what was coming in. The percent funded did increase for both of the plans compared to last year. So our pension plan is now 51% funded, and our OPEB plan is 2% funded. So I do have another slide to talk about a couple of changes that I know have been made to help with this moving forward as well. So in addition to auditing the financial statements, the standards, audit standards require us as your auditors to gain an understanding of the internal controls at the city. So we spend a lot of time walking through your processes, your procedures, and what controls are in place over those. We did have one item that we consider a material weakness, is there were some material audit adjustments that needed to be made. There were just a couple of them, and I just wanted to put it in context for you that there are over 100 journal entries that get posted at the end of the year to close out the books by the controller's office and their department working together to get those books closed. So we had, I think there were three material entries, but I just wanted to point that out, that we're talking about hundreds of entries that need to go into place to get that closed out. And then we did not have any significant deficiencies or other comments and recommendations related to that. We also then, because the city receives more than 750,000 in federal dollars, we're required to do what they call a single audit. So it's very program-specific, based on the federal grants. And this year, we had to test three major programs, because there are rules that tell us how much coverage we have to get. So we tested the Community Development BLAT grant, the Emergency Shelter Grant, and then also the Coronavirus State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds. So we did audit those three, which actually covered about 86% of your total federal expenditures. Your total federal expenditures are a little over 6.4 million, too. So we spent some time with that. It is coming from the federal government as to the rules of what we need to do, and it's very, there's no gray area. It's either yes or no. So we're checking the boxes, so a job well done there. We did not have any findings when we were working through those processes and procedures. And then my last slide here, and this is where I'll talk about some of the OPEB and pension changes, but just some future challenges. And to be honest, these are common amongst most of the cities I audit, and a lot of them in this area, too, is that we do have the increase in the retirement costs for those legacy costs for those current and past employees. You know, there's no specific revenue stream coming in for most cities to help with the infrastructure and some of the replacement of old buildings. So there's not a specific revenue source that the city has to help with the updates and upkeep of those. So just something that, you know, the city has to plan for on keeping everything updated. And then the unfunded OPEB and pension obligation. So the unfunded OPEB obligation, last year when I was up here, that was about 303 million, and it's now down to 140 million. So I know the city has been working hard to get that, you know, to keep that up in their mind as to how are we going to fund this, and there were some changes made. In March, there were two divisions moved to the Medicare Advantage Plan then, which helped reduce those costs of a net reduction in the unfunded liability, as well as some of the investments then were moved from the bond portfolio to a money market. Investments would then help increase that rate of return on there, too. So all of that goes into actuarial calculation that actuary puts on and performs, and then we audit those inputs into that information. And then the unfunded pension obligation, too, decreased over last year, you know, and I know the city had reamortized that unfunded liability, too, to help smooth that out with the ARC payments that were significantly increasing year over year. So by smoothing that out, then you'll be able to, you know, have a more, a similar amount that the city then is required to pay instead of escalating year over year. And then in closing, I just wanted to thank Tim Yolanda, Lori and their team. It really is a group effort to get the audits completed. I think you all have a PDF copy of it, but as you know, it's hundreds of pages. So it takes a lot of work, a lot of, you know, effort on their part, and I do appreciate their professionalism and working together to get it out on time. Are there any questions that I could answer for you?
Do we have any questions? Yes.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your presentation, first of all. But on the part of internal controls over financial reporting, two things I just want to ask. Under material weakness, you said there were three. I wanted to know what those three were. And also, it says no significant deficiencies. So that word sticks out to me, significant. So that means it must have been some, and I just wondered if you could elaborate on those. Thank you so much.
Sure. Yep, no problem. So let me just get the wording. So the adjustments were related to year-end accruals. So really, there's a line drawn in the sand on June 30th, 2022. And we have to then look past that into July, August, sometimes into September, as to, are there receivables? Is there money that the city should have booked as a receivable? They had actually earned it. You don't have it yet. So really, it was just a cutoff timing of booking. It was in the major street fund with some money coming from the state of Michigan. So that just needed to be booked into the correct year. So it was recorded in the new year. We need to move it back into the prior year. And there was a similar case with that for the, and accounts payable, too. So there were services provided that the city owed money to, and it was booked in the next year, and should have been booked into the current year that we're auditing. And that is common with the timing as to when invoices are received, too. So, and the reason we call them material is just because of the dollar amount, based on our auditor judgment when we do our calculation for materiality. And the significant deficiencies, that is a lesser scope than a material weakness, but we did not have any. So we didn't have anything else besides those adjustments that we mentioned in here.
Okay. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Yes.
Did you say, I remember when I first came here, we used $300 in the red on unfunded liability. Did you say that? And now how much are we now?
Sure. Yep, it was. Let me get you the exact number. I think it was three. I wrote it down. You were, the unfunded liability was 303 million, and this is for OPEB, and now it is 140 million. But because of those changes that were mentioned by switching the Medicare, to the Medicare Advantage Plan, and we do have a footnote that we've included in the financial statements that talks about that change in there, too. And then also the investments on having a better rate of return.
So that means we've done that good of a job in eight years, so in another eight years, we should be...
You know, I don't have a magic wand, but I wish I did.
Well, that's good for the citizens to know that we are taking care of our business, and we're doing a pretty good job of getting it out of the way.
Yes.
Thank you.
I'll add to that, because Dennis has worked very hard on that project, and the big, one of the bigger decreases from the last actuarial valuation to this one was that previous move to Medicare Advantage, and now we're moving additional groups. So that should go down on the next valuation as well. And we've been working with MERS probably for the last year to try to set up that stable payment to our pension, so that what we would be looking at is a pretty steady climb up to probably 27, 28 million dollars. Much of that from the general fund. We're increasing it over the next year more than we would have to for a typical ARC, but we're hoping that allows us to keep it stable for the next several years, too. I think it's a 20-year valuation.
Guys are doing a good job on that. Thank you.
Do we have any more questions? Yes.
Jamie, thanks for the great presentation, as always. I always enjoy listening to it every year. What got me and caught my, one of the things I watch is the general fund and property taxes because of our tax cap. So I see that's 3.8 million in there. Is that including our TIFs and OPRA's? Is that all combined in there as well? That number? Is it? So that's everything that's in there? Okay. Because I remember we talked about that, I think, with Lori Brown during the year, and roughly without that, it's about 3.4. Okay. It's tax cap. If you look at these charts and graphs, it's very telling that we're, where we do well and where we're struggling. So thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. For the future challenges with no funding for infrastructure and replacement of old buildings and equipment, is that taking any account of the BIL or IAJA, is what other people call it? Or is that...
No, she's just talking about our own funding for those projects. So if we have funding outside of the general fund for the building replacement, and primarily that infrastructure and building replacement that is being talked, referred to here is for the general fund. So we do have it built into our water system and our wastewater system, and streets has their plans, but this is for our general fund. General fund-funded buildings like City Hall and Police Department, Fire Stations. Potentially, there could be other money coming in grants, or you can use ARPA money for some of the expenditures there, too. And I don't think we took that into consideration for those future challenges.
Okay. And then just real quick, for the general fund revenue and other financial sources, there was, you said a $2 million increase in income tax and then a 110,000 decrease in property taxes?
An increase in property taxes.
Increase.
Yep.
Okay.
Any other questions? Thank you so much. Job well done.
Thank you, Jamie. That concludes the management update, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Yes.
Was he done? Can I ask him a question now?
I'm done.
Questions for the manager.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I do have a question for you, Councilman, Madam Morales. If you can provide any type of update of what's going to go on now with our county and the money we set aside and their allocation, how are we going to move forward? Is there a breach that we can now, because we had Godhouse tell us, set aside a million? What do we do now in that case?
I haven't officially heard of what the allocations were from the county, so I'll contact them again. I did have a brief discussion with the county board chair, so I'll have to get more information for that, but I can send you an update.
If you could possibly, in the conversation with them, if every, because we were provided five, they voted on three, I believe, took one out, just clearly laying out what's going on. Because I think personally for me, and I don't know about any other council members, for the two that we had on our list, that we were talking 3,500,000, and we set aside a million. So, and we were told that we needed to set $500,000 for two particular organizations, which was a million. Their allocations for those two came to around $350,000. So we are now sitting and allocated more money than what they actually allocated. And when we were told as council that we wanted to wait, we were suggested that we need to make a motion, put that money aside, and now it was in good faith that it was going to be matched. And that was just my understanding, why I was okay with it. And now, after their meeting, it wasn't followed up, and it's been close to a week now, and I would have hoped that we would have, council and city, would have had a conversation on what are the next steps to make sure that we are honoring, that they honor that word, and that we are still working towards a good, prospering relationship for the future and additional dollars that we set aside. That's all. Just what I just want you to put in there when I get my report. Those are the things I'm looking for. I'm just looking for those.
Yes.
Yeah. Well, I understand what the councilman is talking about, but I really don't care. I mean, I hope that they would have kept their word and did what they did, because hopefully, we even put more money in those buckets when it come down to it, because, you know, this is our community, and we want our community to be right. So they did what they did, unfortunately, but we're going to have to do what we got to do to make sure our city right. So we said we would put a half a million in there, knowing all the time that we, well, thinking that we was going to put more in there anyway. So when it come down to the vote, hopefully, the city council put more in those buckets anyway, regardless of what they put in them. They didn't bargain in good faith.
Well, and it's not over.
Right.
Because they vote tomorrow. There were recommendations on the table. There were recommendations that they had pulled off the table, they put back on the table, and they're going to discuss them tomorrow. So just like y'all pile in here, pile in at the county meeting tomorrow. What time is it? City manager, four o'clock? I think they meet at four or five. Then you can go and see where the money's going to go. I needed to say this to Councilman Copeland. I agree with Councilman Balls. It don't matter. They, their city functions, and we keep saying we want something for our youth. Don't matter where the money come from, it's that we got it. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I'm going to have to concur with Councilman Copeland, because we were told something, and it did not come to fruition. We don't know, and if I'm not mistaken, myself and Councilman Williams, I know we all have to come to agreement. I haven't said anything too much about where particular dollars go, but if I remember that conversation... if I remember that conversation, and it was that we were voting on those, those particular entities because they were putting out money, dollars, waiting on the city council. Because had it been done a different way, all of the youth agencies and entities, what have you, and I'm not meaning that lightly, I'm just putting it all together, could have also been addressed in that particular meeting or none addressed at all. I'm not taking it lightly the way it came across, however, if it came from the county or us. It didn't look right, it don't feel right, and that's how, all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, Councilman Copeland.
And I do want to provide clarification. I ain't mad at the money we set aside, because I want us to send, set that money aside. My only concern is how we do things community-wise, because we had community organizations here who would have been nice to make a motion like that for them as well. And we had clearly as a council said, hey, we're going to wait a couple of weeks until that committee vote has a meeting, but we kind of got bombarded by Guide House and said, hey, we need to set a million dollars aside. That, and that's the only thing, I have no problem. I believe we're going to set more money aside. It's just that if that was a conversation, if that was discussed, communicated with us. I don't want to get, if we've been having a conversation with the city, county, and the school board, I don't want to get information from citizens when I, when I'm telling the citizens, nope, the city, the county, and the school board, they are meeting, they are talking about this. I don't want to get phone calls from citizens saying, well, didn't y'all say that y'all were doing this? But they did this. I can't respond to that. I'm not in those meetings. I trust the leadership of our city, so that's why I'm going to always make sure that we look good and light. But in the future, if we can, if we're doing things, just communicate with us so we know how to respond when we do get these questions from the citizens.
So, I, I will comment too, because we did, we did have council members in those meetings. The mayor and the mayor pro tem were included in the meetings. And I, I would ask councilor member that the county board has to vote as well. So, all through this process, we've said, we want to work with the county and the other entities to try to leverage funding. And I think what, what Guide House did say was, I think that the county board would have liked to see the city make a commitment to those organizations. If they were going to. That's what I got out of the discussion. And I think there, we have to remember that they do vote. They can be involved in discussions, but they have to vote just like we do on all of their allocations. So, I think that's, that's where we're, when we're talking with either the, and any council member is welcome to come to the city, county, school liaison board meeting as well to see what is being discussed there. And we had talked for, I think since ARPA came out about doing projects together with that, with that group. So, that discussion has been, I do think, yeah, we will follow up with the county and see where they are on their allocations and, and report that back to you.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mr. Manager, just going to be a little bit of a devil's advocate here, and for my colleagues, I actually attended that meeting, and they had a community of the whole. They were trying to figure out like where to put their money. And these four entities did come up in that meeting. What, a little bit on maybe on the county's defense, from what I saw and have witnessed in some of the meetings, is that the county is the county, right? It's a large organization, they have districts, sometimes they're not always in tune with or seeing what the city is, is doing. And that's kind of what I got from that meeting, so I had a board meeting there the next day. I actually took them the spreadsheet that you had provided us, where we had allocated our funds out too, because that was a question that was coming from the county during that meeting as well as trying to fund these youth centers. So, there was, I was hoping I could provide some of that for them, and then I did not see the meeting that they had the next day. So, I would love to go back to some of their more meetings too, because it is good to see, and it's kind of hard when their meetings are done, because they're not videotaped like us, and you can't just go back and, and watch what was discussed. And so, you really have to depend on their meetings, on their minutes, so. But I, I hear you. I can hear what you're saying, we've talked about this, and, but I think it was an eye-opener for me to sit during that process and see them go through their community of the whole.
Mayor, I just want to say, these have to be questions to the manager. We're not going to debate the whole thing. There's no motion, there's nothing. We don't do that here.
That's fine.
The manager questions.
Thank you.
That's fine, fine of your questions to the manager.
No, I was going with the flow, but she cut it off, so I'm good.
Yes, Councilman.
Okay. I don't necessarily say a question in response to what you just said. I got a totally, totally different, in my mind, communication. And I stand to be corrected, but I believe I heard them say that they, they suggested two youth centers, they said that they were looking at. They ended up looking at more, almost double. Not that that's a problem, but when you tell me one thing and flip, no, I won't say that. And it was a certain amount, and they were waiting on us. Now, if I'm wrong, I stand to be corrected, but I, I, I'm under the impression that that is the only reason that we voted that night is to, so that they could go and make their decisions the next night. And that's why we only voted on two entities that night, is because that's what they were going to do. But it ended up being four or five entities, and one put on hold.
There are questions?
Yes, that is, I'm responding to what the manager said. So, I'm saying if I'm wrong, correct me. That's the question.
Oh, we're not hearing that as a question.
Okay, but that's the question.
And I think the mayor and mayor pro tem can confirm those two items were the ones that they communicated to us.
Okay.
For primarily the funding.
Those were the two that they bought. No, they, no, no, let's get it right. They had three, no, four.
Well, they, but in the...
But those two were the two that they were saying they wanted to move forward with.
And there were several that they were funding that I don't even think we had applications for.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? Yes.
Thank you, Mayor. And then I had done an information request on December sixth, and one of those subsections of the information request were documents regarding any identified or potential overlap of neighboring and partnering municipalities or organizations for the ARPA funds to be allocated by the city of, city council to date. Is the response that you gave me the documents that I'm looking for, or the full response? Are you going to follow up with additional documents?
I don't think there are any documents.
There's no documents or communications about overlap that had been talked about by anybody?
We've just had discussions with our groups, there's not any documents.
Actual documents?
Right.
I think, and in the future, are we able to document those discussions?
When we look for formal, I guess when we look for formal funding, yeah, you know, if we applied to the state for some type of additional funding, but I don't think that this discussion we're talking about with the county was that same type, type of information, I guess. You know, if it's a, for instance, the minutes and the, the school liaison board would have documented those items, I guess, but everyone receives those minutes anyway. Council members, anyway.
All right, thank you.
Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Manager.
Your next order of business is the consent agenda.
The agenda has been available at City Hall and on the city webpage on SG TV channel 191. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. I'm sorry, leaving rooms for exceptions.
I'll move.
Do we have any exceptions?
Yes, number four and number six.
Do we have any more exceptions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Item number four is approve the write-off of four demolition receivable accounts totaling one hundred sixty-nine thousand, five hundred forty-two dollars and seventy-five cents that have been deemed unselectable. Councilmember Balls.
I'd like to know specifically which, which, which one of those were the ones that they didn't pay us back? Or, and how did that happen? I mean, did they have insurance on the building? Was the building vacant? Or, I mean, what, what's the deal?
So, these were receivables from fifteen to twenty years ago. So, a lot of history does not exist, but they were, it was brought up during the audit cycle that these are beyond the statute of limitations for collections, for collection. But there were four addresses, and these are the amounts that were listed. This was billed at one point to a contractor for demolition, probably due to an emergency DBO. I don't have any history to really say.
Well, I wanted to know the addresses, so I can know what particular businesses or buildings did they tear down.
There was a Michigan, a South Michigan location, six oh eight.
And that was in two thousand and when?
Two thousand two. They were all in two thousand two, except for one was two thousand seven. And this is just the best records. I can't even really say that these are the locations. I had to search for demo permits by the owner back in assessing records to try to match it up with the miscellaneous receivable.
I'm, I'm just, I'm trying to wrap my head around, how could we demo something that costs thirty thousand, sixty thousand, seventy thousand, and then have no, did we know we weren't going to get our money when we did this? Did we do this just to clear up some land for a business or something? I mean...
These are, these are probably emergency demos, so there might have been a fire or, you know, roof collapse or something like that, where we go in and demo a building because it's, it's a dangerous building. So, we go in and do it, but a lot of times it's an owner who doesn't care about the building anymore. So, we do bill for that. We have it in our budget. We have a dangerous demolition budget within our general fund, but a lot of times, if the building is abandoned anyway, they won't pay that bill, and they will, will not pay the taxes anymore. And then the build, the property would probably go to the land bank, and that receivable will sit there. And we probably should have cleaned it up before, but this is the process for writing that off.
Okay, I just wanted to know, because I know there's some dangerous buildings and houses in the city of Saginaw. I know Mrs. Harris has a house, and the house is caving in on itself. And the lady has a beautiful home right there, and it's been like that for years, you know? And if we going to use that type of dangerous money for that, we need to help tear down some of these houses in the city, you know, instead of just tearing down something for, you know, sixty and seventy thousand dollars, that's just a lot of money, so.
These were pretty large buildings. I'm believing these were really large commercial buildings, not just houses.
I just wanted to know. Thank you. Appreciate your information.
I think, and we did, we did just look at the demos. I think there's about ninety, ninety homes that are on the county land bank demolition list right now. And we're, we're looking at probably for home demolition, about fifteen thousand dollars right now.
Per house?
Yep, per house.
Thank you. I mean, it's good to know, because we can take this back to our citizens and let them know that they got some property need to be cut, cut down, that there is emergency fund to tear down some of this stuff, but it's just not fair, because some houses would be sitting there for five and six, ten years, and they cave in on themselves, and they not getting tear down. It's just not fair. So, thank you.
Motion to approve number four.
Second.
It's been moved to second. Any more discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, Madam Clerk.
Item number six, approve the proposal with price agreed for three hundred and twenty thousand dollars for easement assistance and design services for the Birch Run parallel water transmission main for the Public Service Department, Maintenance and Service Division.
Thank you.
Councilmember Balls.
But this right here, you know, when you see Birch Run, and you knew it in the city of Saginaw, your ears go up, right? So, I understand that we going to put, we going to put in a bigger water main to get water out to those municipalities, is that right?
Oh, the plan is, yeah, we got a sixteen inch right now. We're planning to put in a twenty-four.
Right. So, all that money coming out of the water fund?
Yeah, but this money, because it's for a transmission main, is going to be paid solely through the rates by the wholesale customers.
Okay, the wholesale customers pay for this.
Yep, exactly right. So, you'll see that, pretty soon we're going to start having the meetings with our water rate consultants, so you'll, you'll get a better understanding. All of our out-city transmission main work is, is paid solely by the rates through the wholesale customers. So, this is going to benefit those wholesale customers going out towards Frankenbirch Run. The reason we're doing it is because that main was put in in nineteen seventy-four, and we have a high break history on it. We don't have a redundant main, so part of what we do, we're required to do sanitary surveys from EGO, and one of our weaknesses is not having a redundant main for our out-city customers, our wholesale customers in this area. We're seeing a high break history. So, our plan is to put into, put in a parallel main and then look at ways to rehab the existing main, so we'll have a redundancy.
So, this money come out of the water fund first?
It, it will come out of the water fund, correct.
And then we will get the money back from that municipalities or for those renitents that live out there?
Yep.
Okay. Good. I think everybody like to hear that. I do.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you.
I'd like to motion, I make a motion that we approve number six.
Thank you.
It's been moved to second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Your next order of business is board commission and committee reports.
I'm asking councilmembers who sit on city boards or commissions or authorities, if you have anything to report. Okay. You got your hand up. You do.
I mistakenly announced the city, county, school liaison meeting, one of the previous meetings for last month. Unfortunately, I was postponed until January, so we are looking at having the city, county, school liaison. I believe it's supposed to be the third Thursday of the month, but it could be the twelfth, because they like to change it around. But I would like to ask the manager to have staff follow up to make sure we get confirmation of that, so my colleagues on that board know, and since there's been so much encouragement, you know, that people attend, it would be nice to see some of our other colleagues, if you guys are available, to come and, and join us in those discussions there. But we're looking at sometime in January, the twelfth or the nineteenth, I believe, was what they were tentatively lining us up for, at five thirty.
What day again?
It's supposed to be at the Board of Education, but they keep canceling on it, so I'd like to ask.
Yes.
You might have to revisit that, in my opinion, but...
Yes.
Okay, thanks, Mayor. I sit on the planning commission, and I'm excited about tomorrow's meeting coming up, because we're going to be talking all things solar power. So, colleagues, there are some ordinance changes being proposed that'll be coming, going to planning commission first tomorrow, so I'm looking forward to that meeting.
Is there anyone else? Madam Clerk.
We are now at appointment of board and commission members.
I need a motion to approve one through three.
So moved.
Leave room for exceptions.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and supported. Is there any discussion, any exceptions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, Madam Clerk.
We are now resolutions. We have one this evening, and it's to establish a national incident management system as the standard for incident management.
I need a motion to adopt.
So moved.
It's been moved and supported. Any discussion?
Yeah, what is this?
Adopted already.
Can I explain that?
Come on.
Fire chief can speak to them.
I didn't know it was for the city manager or the clerk or who it was for.
Well, good evening. It's a system that we use to run a, an emergency incident. It's used by the fire department on a regular basis. When major incidents, the police department uses it. It's a formal adoption, so that we are eligible for some grants.
Okay. So, they should have put emergency incident on, and then we would have said, okay, we know who that belongs to. All right, thank you.
It's been moved to second. Any more discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, nay. Madam Clerk.
Here we are at miscellaneous business.
Are there any outstanding? Is there anything? Yes, sir.
I would like to say, because I waited, because it would have been inappropriate at the manager's time for me to say what I was going to say. But I would like for us as council to... But I would like for us as council to really get into the habit of communicating with each other anytime any of us are in a meeting with the manager. So that, because I don't think it's the manager's responsibility to get back with all of us when we have representatives from council in those meetings. So I would ask and encourage us to make sure that we send out emails, and we know what to do in order not to violate the Open Meetings Act. But I would like to, anytime there's something, so we're not getting surprised by anything, be it Guide House, the county, or anybody else, that we all know what's going on before we sit down at this table, because we've reported to each other. Because that is, I don't feel, and I could be wrong, but I don't feel that is his obligation to do so. So that's what I wanted to say during managers' time, so.
That was your question for him, right?
That was my jeopardy. I guess I was going to have to word it like that.
Want to phone a friend?
I'll second.
Any other motion?
I have a question for you. Not a question, but a reminder. I failed to announce it earlier. So it isn't announced, but I want to remind council that your next meeting is January 13. And it's on a Friday. It will begin at 10 o'clock AM. And that's our strategic planning session. And I'm not sure the location yet, if it's going to be right here in chambers. But I'm sure the city manager's office will follow up the agenda and location and communicate that to you.
10 a.m.?
10 a.m., Friday, the 13th of January.
Excuse me. One of the reasons why, and I'm glad you brought it up, Ms. Jen, is so that those who are working can make arrangements to be there.
I'm sorry I didn't announce it, because I was hoping the manager, he wasn't getting my telepathy to... Say that in your update.
So that's fine. Do we have, yes?
We have another planning meeting on a Saturday. What day is that on? Do we?
No.
All right.
None I'm aware of. You must have your own meeting.
No, well, we used to do them on Saturdays, but we changed to Friday.
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
First.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Happy holidays, everybody.